Meetings are webcast live by the City of Hamilton and temporarily archived on the city's website. Other than other individuals and the media may also be audibly and/or visually recording this meeting as a reminder that all electronic devices to be switched to a non-audible mode or you will annoy me. I think I should do that, too. Happy Friday. And before we begin, I'd like to wish a happy birthday to Councilor Vanderbee.
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday dear Arlie. Happy Birthday to you.
And you're two days older than me. All right, changes to the agenda. Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. There is an added delegation from Don McLean respecting the 2018 capital transit budget. Therefore, I've added item four to the agenda. I've also had to add an item five, the category for delegations. So the presentation has now become item 6.1.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended, please? Councilor Green, Councilor Conley, all those in favor. All those in favor.
Jerry.
Thank you. Declarations of interest, are there any? Seeing none. Approval of the minutes of the previous meeting on October the 20th, please. I need a mover and a seconder.
Can it move?
Thank you. Councilor Farr, Councilor Partridge, all those in favor.
Jerry.
Thank you. Delegation request, Don McLean respecting 2018 capital transit budget for today's meeting. What is the committee's wish respecting item 4.1? Councilor Partridge, Mayor, all those in favor. Oh, come on, folks. All those in favor.
Jerry.
Thank you. So we have Don McLean coming up at 5.1. Don, would you like to come down and speak to the Transit Capital Budget, please?
Good morning. Thank you for agreeing to hear me, but my presentation is very short. I had requested to speak in hopes of knowing what you would have in front of you. That wasn't posted until sometime last night, I gather. It wasn't up at 4 o'clock yesterday. I found the paper copy this morning and I don't have any possible hope in going over this and making any sense of it. So unless you're interested in me speaking after your presentation, I don't really have anything to say. It's unfortunate that something that, as straightforward as what appears to be in this report, wasn't put up on the agenda so the public could actually see what was going on in this meeting and have the opportunity to speak to it.
Just a second, please. I'll go to the Clerk and then Councilor Marilla.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Clerk.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. It was posted early yesterday afternoon, I believe just around lunchtime, so I'm not sure.
Sorry, I'm gonna hear you.
Okay, can you speak up, please?
It was posted early yesterday afternoon around lunchtime, so I'm not certain. It was pulled down just for a few moments in order to replace an error. There was an error in one of the slides, so I'm not sure, but it was reposted immediately thereafter.
Don, can you just wait a second? We've got some more questions, if you don't mind. And Councilor Marilla, has your question been answered?
Well, that was the first question. And the second question would be with respect to Don. You tried to access it at what time?
Ian just told me he tried the access at 4:00 and wasn't able to get it. I looked at it. I haven't been at my computer since Wednesday evening, so Wednesday evening it wasn't there.
All right. I think we need to confirm that firstly before we can probably assume anything at this point. But if, Madam Clerk, if you can find that out, that would be greatly appreciated.
Through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I'm gonna actually check right now to see if it's coming through online, but I posted it myself yesterday and then I pulled it down for two minutes.
Because I have no problem allowing Mr. McLean to come at the end of the presentation to do the delegation.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. McLean?
That would be fine. Thank you very much.
Would that satisfy? Thank you. So moved by Councilor Marilla, seconded by Councilor Green, all those in favor. Thank you. So, Don, I'll call you over after the presentation.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, so let's go straight to the presentation. Dalva Dov. Director of Transit will provide the presentation respecting 6.1. Good morning, Deb.
So, good morning, Madam Chair and members of committee. Today, I'm here to provide information regarding the Transit Capital Program. Transit has evolved over the last 100 years. There is a renewed focus on active transportation with transit as the centerpiece. HSR has been providing transit service for over 140 years. Throughout this time, we have continually evaluated and updated our fleet utilizing the current environmentally friendly propulsion technologies available, and we will continue to do so going forward. The capital plan is outlined in this presentation, learns from the past, and prepares us for achieving the vision of transit, your first choice. Transit has been identified as a priority by all levels of government. Investment in public transit provides many benefits which tie directly to our corporate priorities, to be economic prosperity and growth, built environment and infrastructure, our people and performance, and healthy and safe communities. As a city grows, it is important to consider transit in all new developments and intensification projects. This will reduce investments in additional roads, lead to improvements in community health, provide economic benefit to the individual and to the city as high-quality transit will attract new business. Investments made now will continue to pay dividends for many generations and will contribute to Hamilton being the best place to raise a child and age successfully. Transit's ability to raise capital funds comes from three main sources. First, from reserves. Transit contributes funds annually to the Vehicle Replacement Transit Reserve through the operating budget to ensure that bus replacement program is sustainable. Secondly, from higher levels of government, such as the current Public Infrastructure Transit Fund, or PTF, provides the funds needed for service expansion, and the Federal Gas Tax Fund, which has become a funding replacement resource for the discontinued Ontario Bus Replacement Program, or OBRP. And finally, block funding is access to supplement the OBRP replacement as well. $219 million has been committed to investments in transit over the last eight budget years, including most recently in 2017, the $72 million in PTF projects. The basic capital program is needed so that we can continue to provide the service we deliver today. We must continue to renew our current assets as they reach end of life. The Vehicle Replacement Transit Reserve is funded only to sustain the replacement of the revenue and non-revenue fleet. Currently, there are no capital reserves available to fund the replacement of on-street infrastructure or technology. We currently look to other levels of government to provide necessary funding for these replacements, as we did in PTF. In addition to the basic Transit Capital Program, there are unfunded capital requirements that are key in the long-term growth and viability of the HSR. The capital items listed here were identified as part of the 10-year local transit strategy as a means of creating a transit system that provides an excellent customer experience, keeps up with growth, and provides service at a level that leads to an increase in the modal share for transit. PTF has allowed for the continued investment in transit service by providing the needed capital funds to expand the bus fleet and begin work on the MSF. These funds also ensure the current facility remains operational, updating the leasehold improvements such as wash racks, bus hoists, and garage doors. It is anticipated that an announcement for PTF Phase 2 will be made in April of 2018. Therefore, subsequent investments for the MSF, our largest project, have been pushed out to the years 2019 and 2020. Therefore, the 2018 capital budget is for the Transit Basic Capital Program that was outlined on Slide 7. As stated previously, the Basic Capital Program, which includes the HSR Bus Replacement Program, is funded from the Vehicle Replacement Transit Reserve. The purchase for 2018 will replace 11 40-foot buses and 7 60-foot articulated buses. This is a look at capital that is in need of funding. With the anticipated announcement of PTF Phase 2 coming in the spring, many of the unfunded projects have been moved out to 2019 to allow for a seamless transition from PTF Phase 1 to PTF Phase 2. In the meantime, projects identified to begin in 2018 are at the discretion of council and are intended to start to address state-of-good repair and to plan for the next phase of growth in transit. The funding to replace the loss of the OBRP program normally comes from $3 million of our federal gas tax money and $700 from the block funding, or the tax levy. The majority of these requests are part of the original conception of capital requirements for the 10-year local transit strategy. Though there are many challenges, it is important not to lose sight of the long-term benefits of a healthy and sustainable transit program. Transit in Hamilton operates on many different levels for many different groups and individuals. There are those who rely on it fully as their means of getting to work, to school, to appointments, to live their lives. There are also those who would like to take transit but need to be sure that they will get where they want to go when they want to get there. We need to provide a service that is frequent and reliable to ensure that we can maintain and build our customer base. Hamilton needs to be ready as demographics change, as the population continues to grow, and as we all get ready for LRT. In conjunction with these and other changes, the HSR wants to make that it is an engine of prosperity and growth, meeting and exceeding the expectations of the customer by providing a built environment that Hamilton can be proud of and by providing the means to be a key contributor to improving the health of the community. In many ways, the capital program, as it has been highlighted here, moves Hamilton in that direction. Coupled with a continued focus on our people and a commitment to customer service excellence, the future can be one in which transit is the first choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And just for clarity purposes, I'm gonna go through all the acronyms that you just mentioned.
Oh, sorry. Okay.
So if you can go to, please, Slide 6. This is mentioned not only on this slide but also on Slide 12. The OBRP is?
Ontario Bus Rebuild Program.
Thank you. And let's go to the next one. Can you go to Slide 9? LTD expended.
So that is the, one second. That's what we have spent so far.
So, life-to-date?
I believe that is the financial terms.
Okay. And PO?
That would be Purchase Order Committed.
Thank you. And on the next Slide 10, you talked about MSF.
Maintenance and Storage Facility.
Maintenance, storage. And you also had another one I didn't catch through your talk. MSF for the SAS, ABC, or something. Maybe I was wrong, but I thought I heard another acronym.
Not on that slide.
And lastly, PTF. We all know that, but I just wanna follow the bouncing ball.
Public Transit Infrastructure Fund.
All right. Thank you. So are there any questions for the Director of the HSR right now? Thank you. Councilor Partridge?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Deb, for the presentation. So I'm not sure which, I think it was one of the first slides, Slide number 9? No, I don't think so. Okay, the one that showed the spending from 2010 to 2017. Am I reading that correctly? That over the last seven years, we've spent $218, say, $219 million on HSR?
Through you, Madam Chair, yes.
Okay. Why are we, this is just my opinion, what I'm seeing and hearing, why are we no further I mean, you know, that seems to be the elephant in the room. We've spent, that's an awful lot of money. And I just, maybe Dan McKinnon can answer that question, or someone else up there, but, you know, with all, there's a lot of issues going on right now.
So, through the chair, I'll start off in regards, so that is the capital funding?
Correct.
The other aspect is the operating dollars.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
Yeah, and we're gonna deal with that.
In January.
In January.
Correct.
Oh, sorry. Mr. McKinnon?
Through you, Madam Chair. I don't have the exact number. I know that we've added about 119 operator positions. We've added tens of thousands of hours of service, so that we've grown the level of service tremendously over the last number of years. We can certainly provide that information, but, I mean, just in a broad sense, there's been a tremendous increase to the level of service that we provided, so a general statement like that, it's just not true.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor?
Okay, well, I'm just gonna leave it out there, because I'm sure there'll be other comments as well.
Thank you. Councilor Aden Johnson, Councilor Green, then Councilor Ferguson. Councilor Aden Johnson?
Thank you very much. And through you, Madam Deputy Mayor. Debbie, could you please reflect on how the investments you're proposing help us get back on track with the 10-year transit strategy?
So, through the chair, I will be bringing more information back on Transit Day for the operating budget in January, and can address that through the operating budget. What we have here for the capital investment are, you know, in a nutshell, our capital plan is the purchasing of buses and replacing buses, so that's the one part of the equation that we need, obviously, to have the buses available to go out on the road to put the extra service out. The other aspect of that would be captured within the operating plan, which I'm coming back in January for council's review.
Thank you, Counselor.
Right. And, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think it's a very important point that some in the community don't appreciate, that this council has increased funding for HSR on a year-to-year basis over the past several years. Simultaneously, in my conversations with Ms. Dalva Dov and with Mr. McKinnon, I've been asking about how we can make our investments smarter, and Counselor Partridge was getting at this with her line of questioning. How can we, what are we getting for our money and how can we invest smarter? And leading into kind of a deeper question, which is, what additional investments are necessary in order to grow our transit system appropriately, entice riders back to the system? We know we've lost some riders. Grow the system in a way that's right for the economy and that encourages transit and that gets us ready for LRT? And it all seems to come back to the 10-year transit strategy. So, kind of a clarification question through you. Debbie, could you please clarify exactly, and forgive me, colleagues, I'm going to use a transit metaphor. How did we get slightly off-track with the 10-year transit strategy, and how do we get back on track?
Thank you. Debbie?
So, through the chair, the decision was made through the budget cycle last year, as we all are aware, to put a pause on the 10-year transit strategy from the operating perspective. You know, through the PTF project, we identified the capital purchases for the vehicles, and typically the lead time for us to actually secure a bus is upwards of a year. So we are expecting those vehicles to be on-site in the early part of 2018. So that would be the capital portion, you know, without a bus, to put the operating dollars out, or the service. I can't put service on the road if I don't have a bus, so that was the first part of what the requirement is. In regards to how we get back on track, I will be bringing that information back to council on January 26, when we review the operating budget.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. And I, of course, appreciate why it is that our capital budget and our operations budget are separated. However, just an observation, it creates a certain artificiality in our transit conversation. I think it's worth considering in future years, putting our, perhaps in the specific case of transit, putting operations and capital together, so that we have a clearer and more holistic picture of our transit strategy. That said, we're doing it the way we're doing it, and I think it's clear, I think Debbie's made it clear, that these investments in capital, in literally new buses, are essential to maintaining our level of service and growing it a bit. And I suppose the last question I'm going to ask is, are we, is the proposal, in your opinion, Debbie, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, is the proposal that we have in front of us ambitious enough?
Debbie?
So, through the chair, you know, as it was outlined and defined within the 10-year strategy, there was the operating component of that strategy as well as the capital. I believe for the service that we were anticipating putting out on the road through the extent of the 10-year strategy, that the capital that was identified was what we required in order to grow the service, increase ridership, and improve the customer experience.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thanks very much. And I, I'm sorry, Madam Deputy Mayor, I misallowed you. I do have one more question. It's kind of a request, too. Debbie, could you go back to, there was a useful slide where you talked about all the good reasons to care about public transit. Was it two, Slide 3, maybe? Where was it?
Through the chair, I believe, Slide 4.
Slide 4. I think it's just worth revisiting. And because, Madam Deputy Mayor, I think that sometimes, as a culture and as a society, we gloss over these arguments a bit too quickly. Many of us are familiar with them, but it's worth reiterating them. Particularly the point at the bottom, public transportation as an investment in social equity. We know that transit is a justice issue, that there are, to put the argument, and I think it's its best form, we know that low-income children and youth in our community need transit to get around, and that if we're not investing in the right quantity and quality of transit for them, that we are putting low-income youth at a disadvantage over higher-income youth, which is simply unfair and not in keeping with our responsibility. I observe that only because I think it's important to keep in mind that public transit decision-making is deeply important from both an economic and a social perspective. And I think, I know that this council is going to invest appropriately this year, and I'm looking forward to figuring out how much we need to invest and how we can get the most bang for our buck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Green?
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. And it should be added, quite rightly, a justice issue, a class issue, not just low-income youth, but low-income adults, and low-income seniors, and low-income families, and low-income workers, and low-income people with disabilities, and all types of folks need to take the bus for various amounts of reasons, so it certainly is a justice and a class issue. An analogy was made that over the 2000-2017 consolidated capital investment, $218 million was invested, and yet the assertion was made that we're kind of still in a bad spot. I do notice on the right-hand column under the levy, we got a bunch of goose eggs going down that column there to about $4.9 million at the bottom with the Fund Transit Reserve. So can you just maybe explain a little bit better what the Fund Transit Reserves canceled ORB funding is?
So, through the chair, the OBRP used to be supported by the government, and they canceled that, so as a result, then it fell to the municipalities to be able to sustain a reserve, so that when we bought a vehicle in 12 years, that we would be able to replace that vehicle through the, and that fund, and those dollars come from the operating?
From the operating side, which is all levy-side wards 1 through 8?
No. I'm gonna defer to Mr. Zagarik.
Mr. Zagarik, is it only wards 1 to 8 that pay for transit?
So, through the chair, all of the, the city as a whole pays for it, however, it is levy-based on kilometers of service, so it is principally, the majority of the funding is raised through wards 1 through 8.
Fair enough. And just while these comparisons are being put out there, about $218 million, and yet we're still in a rough spot, as it were, for transit, there hasn't been improvements. Just to compare it, if we could, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, to Mr. Zagarik, roughly how much have we spent in the same period of time on roads?
Mr. Zagarik?
So, through the chair, if I could just ask, is the question specific to capital?
Correct.
Over the last three years, we are committing about $55 million annually to roads in terms of discretionary capital, and I would hazard a guess that over the 10-year period, likely in that $40 to $45 million annual.
Thank you.
Annual.
Through the chair, annual.
And we still, with roads, have a massive deficit, massive backlog on repairs.
Through the chair, our annual infrastructure deficit for roads is in the area of $120 million, just for roads, $195 million overall, but again, $120 million of that, $195 is roads-related.
Counselor?
And I say that in relative terms, Madam Deputy Mayor, because it's often the case with capital, that we're in situations where we're investing in capital that doesn't seem to ever have an improvement, right? Like, there's still complaints about roads, we're still certainly in complaints about traffic, or transit, and yet we can see the goose eggs along that right-hand column in terms of the blank spots along the levy there, which is, which is a conversation I'm sure that we could have onto itself. I will say, though, if you go to Slide number 9, I would like, for my own reconciliation, $30 million for the PTF project update on the Transit Maintenance and Storage Facility, and then later on, I believe you have it listed here with both 2018 and 2019 to 2021, unfunded liabilities or capital in need of funding sources. So what is the total cost of the transit terminal that you have budgeted for?
Debbie?
Through the chair, I'm gonna ask Tanya to speak on the MSF for those numbers.
Tanya?
Through the chair?
Tanya?
Tanya, thank you.
Tanya, through the chair.
Through the chair. The ultimate end construction, is that the question?
Correct, yes. We've heard in previous years upwards to $300 million. I'm just wondering, under this plan, is it relative to that in terms of the need in the future unfunded liability, or has there been a more moderate conservative number put forward?
Current estimates, through the chair, current estimates are $100 to $120 million.
Thank you. Counselor?
And at the time, and I'm asking this in very specific ways, at the time, I had requested that we look at the Wentworth facility that I believe was funded at one time by the federal government and now sits as a public works facility. Have we looked at the abilities to retrofit that, or are we talking about building brand-new?
Thank you. Tanya?
Through the chair, the current plan is to build brand-new.
Counselor?
And the facility in Ward 3 there on Wentworth was designed as a bus facility, correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
So, given that we have a new set of actors, has there been an opportunity to maybe reset and revisit what an option would be to look at the bus barn on Wentworth, which is now, and I've walked through it, I'm not sure it's used to its fullest capacity, but I feel like what happened was you had a, basically, a capital switcheroo, where one of our transit assets became a public works asset, and I understand that transit facilities are designed in a very specific way, so why did that get transferred over to public works when it's possible we can look at it as an enhanced, or rebuilt, or adaptive reuse of a transit facility there?
Tanya?
Oh, Dan, sorry. Dan would like to answer.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I can't hear from the other side. I'm just trying to get the answer over here.
Very good.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair. I don't know specifically all the background. I will tell you that there are a number of operating divisions in the existing building, between water, roads, darts, fleet, and the traffic, and the city's call center are all in there. And I think that's, you know, that's an ongoing discussion that we're having about rationalizing city yards, so if we were to move all of those folks out to use it as a bus barn, and you are absolutely correct, it was designed, and it's almost a complete replica of the bus barn on Highway 6 that we use now, that would just involve moving a lot of other people in a variety of different ways. And that project has been a real struggle to rationalize where would we put all those other folks, so it's a good question. I don't know the history of it, but it would create significant challenges to find places for other folks to go.
Thank you, Counselor.
So, I walked through the old Equity Office there, and I had a conversation So, I walked through the old Equity Office there, and I had a conversation with staff yesterday, and they explained to me that revenue generation is now in that office, and that some folks from the communications rent space in there. So I'm under the understanding that when it comes to departments, that departments are made whole on the costs of, whether it be storage, or maintenance, or desks, so when the transfer was made, was the Transit Department adequately funded and compensated for the loss of that transit facility from their department to Public Works?
Mr. McKinnon? Or, oh, sorry, Mr. Zagarik would like to speak.
So, through the chair, the, how we allocate accommodation costs is through what we refer to as chargebacks. So each service area through corporate facilities is allocated a cost based on full-cost recovery for their accommodation costs. So as transit moved out of one location and moved into another location, those costs associated, those previous costs for 330 Wentworth Street would have come off of their expenditures, and their costs associated to their new facility would have been added on to their budget in terms of expenditures. So in terms of accommodations, areas are levied according to their square footage in each of their facilities that they occupy.
And was, was that storage facility 100% financed by the city, or was it funded through other levels of government?
Yeah, through the chair, I'd have to go back, I, I wasn't with the city at the time, so we would have to go back to see what the funding source was for that, for establishing that facility.
Counselor?
Madam Deputy Mayor, I'm trying to get laser-focused on the capital needs of transit as this 10-year strategy is laid out, and it feels like to me, looking at the PTFs that we have now, and the types of projects that are being funded by upper levels of government, if I were to guess, if I were to wager a guess, I'd probably say, at some point in time, either the feds or the province, probably the feds, kicked in for the bus barn. It was built on Wentworth, it was functional, and at some point, it was transferred over to Public Works, and now we're back with $100 million ask, or $120 million ask for capital on transit, when we have a bus barn sitting in my ward that could be adequately retrofitted, and through the PTF project updates that we have here, it seems to me like there's an opportunity for, for, this would be at the, at the Rymel location, I would imagine?
Thank you, Counsel, Mr. McKinnon? Is it the Rymel or the Upper James?
Upper James, sorry.
Sorry. Through the chair, yes, some of the upgrades are related to 2200 Upper James. Thank you.
It, it, it occurs to me that, you know, the costs, if we were to revisit what the cost would be on a new bus barn, given the, the very particular nature of, of this list here, of the types of design features, doors, square footage, that if we revisited that Wentworth location, we might find cost savings to the taxpayers in the tens of millions of dollars. If we were to look at creating a standalone new Public Works facility, funded through Public Works, and by funding it through Public Works, I mean on the general levy on all wards, we would find a more equitable way to finance the capital out of transit, because this, to me, seems like a little bit of balance book voodoo, where we had an asset in transit, we lost it to another department, they weren't really made whole, and now we're back into this situation where this department now, as in their 10-year transit strategy, the, the requirement to double down and build now a third transit hub, or a bus barn, if you will. So, you know, if I'm looking through books, and I'm just a simple, small-business guy, but I know where to find the money, that's where I would look at the money, because it's one of your biggest line expenses, and I would say to you, Debbie, that, you know, prior to you, you had one of your major assets basically acquired by Public Works, you got mugged, and now you're back to the table asking for more, and the challenge when you ask, in this strategy, at the, at the, you know, the, to Counselor Partridge's point, it looks like big numbers. You peel some of this stuff back, and you go from $100 million to, say, a $20 or $30 million retrofit, I, I, I would suggest you could probably have a state-of-the-art bus barn down there on Wentworth. So, is that something you'd be willing to consider and bring back?
Debbie?
So, through the chair, I can have staff look at, I'm, I'm not familiar right now what analysis was done to land on whether or not building an additional, brand-new facility was more cost-effective than retrofitting the existing facility at 330 Wentworth, but we could certainly go back and look at what that may have, or could look like, through the chair.
Yeah, I'd be a lot more comfortable if all those departments who are in that bus facility that are, that are, you know, all funded by the general levy on wards one through 15, paid for a new facility on wards one through 15 in an equal way, that was particular to the needs of their departments, because I, I seem to remember there being a lot of excess space in some of our Public Works facilities. I mean, like, lots of space. So I've been down, I think, the one that's over in Sam's Ward, you know, I, I don't think space is an issue, I think it's about how we allocate the space, and more in particular, I think it's about how we do the chargebacks on the capital that transit got mugged on. So, I don't know, does that need to come by direction?
Well, actually, I'm going to go to the clerk, because I understand it was during this term of council that it was voted on for the new bus terminal. So if I can go to you, Madam Clerk, just for some clarity, whether this needs reconsideration, or was this done last term? And it does not.
Through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, I believe it was done this term, but I would like to confirm, so I'll take a look.
Okay, so we'll, we'll put that on notice right now, we'll have the clerk look it up.
Yeah, and Madam Deputy Mayor, I mean, I would be happy to have a reconsideration vote to look at, to take a step back, potentially to save taxpayers, tens of millions of dollars, tens of millions of dollars, to retrofit that facility, and I said it to Dixon when he was here, I thought it was astronomical when he came with $300 million ask for a bus barn, didn't make sense to me then, $112, or $120, whatever the, whatever the total was now, given that we have that one right there in Ward Three, doesn't make sense to me, and all the fiscal conservative folks around this table who are tight on the belt with the taxpayers, I look forward to your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and just a footnote to that, I believe, the former GM of Public Works, Jerry Davis, did a very in-depth presentation on that very subject, so I think that it's going to be very easy to pull all that stuff back up, and then we can revisit.
Specifically, I'd like to know about the funding history on how the, how the bus terminal was acquired from transit, I'm going to say wards one through eight, to Public Works, and, and what was the, I want to know the historical chargeback on that, how much money and how much allocation was transit provided at that point in time?
Okay.
Otherwise, we got our pockets picked.
Okay. Are, are you clear on, on what that direction looks like right now in your head, or do you need more clarification?
Through the chair, we're clear.
Thank you, and just before I finish relinquishing the chair to you, Dan McKinnon would like to clarify some numbers for you. He just received them.
Through you, Madam Chair, yes, we've tracked down the numbers here. Since 2007, we've increased the staff complement to transit by 119 FTEs, that's operators and mechanics and the associated support staff, and we've added 188,000 hours of service since 2007.
Sorry, how many hours of service?
188,000.
Thank you. Counselor, would you like to respond?
Is that net or gross? Because we had this problem in the last report.
Okay, thank you. Before or after taxes?
No, it's about, it's about the complement, like, are you talking, like, the last time these numbers came up, even, even when we're reporting on the 58, and Joey was quite right in his reporting, that when we reported the 58, we were already accounting for ones we'd already hired, so they're not new, new. I'd like to know about new, new.
So, new, new hours of service.
Yeah, so through you, Madam Chair, this is budgeted complement, so this was the complement that was increased through the budget process over the last 10 years.
So that's including for attrition, retirements, and all the other things?
It accommodates for all of that.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, and next on my list is Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Debbie, I just want to be summarized, but I think you just told us today, and that is that pre-2018, we invested $39 million in capital, and that goes back a number of years, although I think most of it is the PTF funding, we have $70 million in PTF funding, of which half of it came from our budget, and the other half came from the federal government, and I, I think that weighed heavily into our decision of how we located the, the new bus barn that's going to be constructed, because we're getting 50% of the funding from the federal government on that. So just so I'm clear, you're saying now, and if you want to go to, I was flipping sides here while the previous speaker was on, just give me a second. This is a slide that talks about pre-2018, and, and then we're, we're taking a pause. That was, let's go forward, I think it may be slide 12, I think, yeah, slide 12. So, just so I understand this, $30 million prior to 2018, and you're, you're looking for capital in 2018, or the 2018 budget, which we're in right now, of $4.8 million, and then in 2019, when we expect the next PTF phase to come in, is when the, we're back up again, spending $163 million for the final phase. Have I interpreted that correctly?
Through the chair, I believe that's correct, so we're hoping for a seamless transition between PTF Phase One to Phase Two, with the majority of the capital expenditure going forward towards the new MSF. Did I answer your question?
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and of course, you've got the, the transfer for reserves for bus replacement over above the, the $4.8 million, is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct, so our, our replacement buses are funded through our, the reserve that we fund through our operating dollars.
Thank you, Counselor.
Correct, I got that, and so, of the $4.8 million you're requesting in 2018 in capital, 3.7 of that is fund transfer reserve shortfall. What is that?
So, through the chair, typically in the past, that has come from our federal gas tax dollars, $3 million, and the remaining $700,000 has typically been funded through block funding or the tax levy.
Thank you, Counselor.
So what is the net impact, then? Is it, is it 4.8, or is it significantly less than that because of the gas tax funding for the capital for 2018 that would be assessed to the levy? Is it nothing?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Zagarik.
Mr. Zagarik?
So, through the chair, so I have the advantage of having more information, so just in terms of expanding on, on Debbie's slide, and I'll take you through, committee through this, you're going to receive this information on November 24th, when we present the capital budget to you. So, in terms of 2018, what we are showing as funded transit projects, capital projects, gross is $19.4 million, net 4.8, the figure that you see on the slide before you. The difference is, as Counselor Ferguson's identified, is a portion of that is funded from the provincial gas tax, a portion of that is funded from transit reserves, a portion of that's funded from federal gas tax. So the gross investments, $19.4 million, the levy contribution, capital levy contribution, so this would be borne through our operating levy or, or debentures, is $4.8 million.
Of which, three points.
Thank you, Counselor.
Of which 3.7, Mike, then, comes from gas tax revenue, not from the levy?
So, through the chair, from the federal gas tax, it's a $3 million contribution. Annually, we receive $10 million from the provincial gas tax that's dedicated to transit.
Counselor?
And so, and so the $4.8 million then, you said the whole thing hits levy, but it doesn't, if gas tax is funding 3.7 of it. Correct?
No, through the chair, the 4.8 is a levy funding, so we net off the contribution from reserves, whether it's the federal gas tax reserve, the transit reserve subsidy, subsidy isn't provincial, so the, the impact to local taxpayers and, and users, transit users, is the $4.8 million.
Okay, and that's down, and that's down from $39 million last year, which was primarily...
Excuse me, your microphone? Thank you.
$35 million, which is our 50% share of the PTF funding. That's why it was such a big jump last year.
And, and through the chair, that will be before committee again on November 24th, because we dealt with the first year of the financing required for that, so you'll recall, when we presented our outlook and council-approved a guideline, there was half a percent capital levy for our traditional blocks, and then a dedicated 0.4 to fund our contribution of the PTF. Our contribution was $29 million debt financed, we need to service that debt, $7 million as it relates to the maintenance storage facility coming from development charges. So our total local contribution, $36 million, $29 million from debt, $7 million from development charges.
Counselor Ferguson?
Okay, so that, the next, your phase in the debt as the building is constructed, so there'll be an impact for the carrying cost, the mortgage cost, to speak as a layman, again, in 2018 then?
Yeah, so, so through the chair, that's correct, and the impact is about a 0.4% impact, so somewhere in the area of about $14 to $15 for an average household.
Okay, I appreciate that information. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Counselor Farr is taking himself off the list, Counselor Marula, then I'll have Counselor Jackson, and then the mayor. Counselor Marula.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Debbie, I, I'm not sure if you're aware, but back in 2007, I brought forward a motion to look at public transit and, and shifting that 50, or approximately 50% of the farebox onto the general levy, and study the possibility of eliminating the fares in order to basically have a fair comparison to that of our road system, and, and the fact we don't toll our roads. Through you, Madam Chair, I, I'm going to serve notice that I'd like to have that studied again, in conjunction with the elimination of area rating, to see what the per-household cost would be to, to eliminate the fares accordingly. So through you, to Debbie, from a sustainability standpoint, if we were to go down that road, those additional resources would be incredibly vital to the sustainability of the public transit system, in your opinion, I presume.
Debbie?
So, through the chair, I'm, I just, I'm not understanding the, the resources that you're referring to, if you could just, sorry.
So at present, we, we rely on the farebox?
Correct.
And the general levy?
Correct.
If we were to eliminate fares altogether and provide free public transit?
Correct.
And then eliminate area rating, and make it citywide, to determine what the per-household cost would be in, in having on the general levy, that would change our public transit system overnight, and the, the impact that that would have would be quite remarkable.
I think...
And, and through you, Madam Chair, in 2007, it was deemed that it would be $150 per household for just wards one through eight, basically, at that time. So if you were to open it up citywide, look at the additional cost, that number would be in and around $100 per household, I would suspect. So from your, from your perspective, as a public transit director, it would be a sustainability question, and what would, what do you believe about that particular initiative?
So, through the chair, anytime I, as a transit organization, that we get more operating dollars to put service on the street, will always improve public transit. It's the operating dollars to be able to increase the service, the reliability, the frequency, to have those dollars associated with the capital investments are, are what is required to improve the service.
And the reason why I say this is, I've never been a supporter of tolling the expressway, or tolling any roads, for that matter, and I do so because we basically have free roads, per se, in that we're not subjecting vehicular traffic to a fare of any kind. So when you look at it from an equality standpoint, and you look at the sustainability issues of environment and social, that, the benefits far away giving, giving free transit than it is giving free roads with respect to the key indicators, particularly, folks, you look at the expressway right now, first thing in the morning, through you, Madam Chair, and all I see as I'm driving east are red lights, and all, and all I'm seeing is congestion, and the more Trontonians are moving this way, the worse that's going to become, and, Madam Chair, the worse that our population increase projections are going to occur, even internally, the city of Hamilton's is going to experience congestion, and at present, we are so far behind other cities like Montreal, Toronto, and New York, and major cities, and we are a major city, but we keep acting like we're not, especially when it comes to public transit. So through you, Madam Chair, I am serving notice accordingly, I'm going to ask perhaps your assistance in, in wording it, but when it comes down to approximately 40 cents a day per household to provide equivalent free transit, as we provide free road access, I, I think is an incredible investment, and one that we should look at studying the feasibility. I know in 2007, I lost that vote, but it was a different time in 2007, so I look forward to that new report and that new debate, and, and we'll, we'll go from there, but I'll ask for your assistance accordingly as well.
Through the chair, we can bring that back, sure.
Thank you. Counselor Jackson?
Thanks, Madam Deputy Mayor, and Debbie, my apologies for being late.
Debbie, my apologies for being late, still helping a patient at home rehabbing. So, sorry I missed a lot of your presentation, but I've caught up on it here and talking to a couple of my colleagues. And Debbie, thank you for your leadership, much appreciated. And I know we're going to collectively, right across the board, with all players at the table, we're going to get through this in a positive way. I firmly believe that. Madam deputy mayor, just a few questions from a capital side, Debbie. Roughly right now, you've got about 260 buses in the fleet?
Through the chair, 251.
251.
Thank you.
And Debbie, what are, what's the combination? Is it diesel, compressed natural gas, hybrid of both, heavy on one side, not on the other side? Madam deputy mayor, through to Debbie.
So, through the chair, currently approximately 33% of our fleet are CNG.
CNG.
So, we have, oh, sorry, compressed natural gas.
Thank you.
Well, I knew what that was, Debbie, so carry on, please.
No, I'm sorry, councillor Jackson, I asked Debbie to expand on all her acronyms during her presentation, so that's why that question was asked.
I absolutely love acronyms. Carry on.
So, currently, we have 67 40-foot vehicles that are CNG, and 18 articulated vehicles that are CNG.
Thank you, councillor.
So, the rest are either diesel or hybrid, Debbie? That's what I was asking further, please.
Through the chair, my apologies. The remainder of the fleet are diesel vehicles currently.
And are we, I've had conversations with one of your managers, Mark Selkirk, in the past, and this has been kind of a roller coaster over 20, 25 years that I've been here in terms of which type of vehicle to purchase to get ahead of the curve, less maintenance, more efficiency on gas, et cetera, on the fuel needed. So, are you, Debbie, and your team, management team, satisfied with that complement, that comprehensive complement you currently have, or do you see something changing in the future, madam deputy mayor?
Debbie?
So, through the chair, currently for us to operate a diesel vehicle, it costs us 51 cents per kilometer. Our CNG vehicle is 17 cents per kilometer on our current cost.
Thank you, councillor.
Wow, what a change. That's about a third of the cost of diesel, but I've also, and you've been in the business a long time, Debbie, as you've said with your resume, I've seen the ebb and flow of going heavy on CNG, and then having past administrators here saying, "No, no, councillor Jackson, we've made a mistake. We've got to go back to diesel. Diesel's the thing of the future. Hybrid's now, if we can get a hybrid type of bus." So, you're comfortable with where we stand right now with the combination of what you have, Debbie?
Debbie?
Through the chair, absolutely. CNG is more environmentally friendly than a diesel vehicle. You know, we do have electric buses in the future on the horizon coming through. The technology is new to the transit industry, so as anything with new technology, you know, it takes a while to work out the bugs and what the application is as far as the electric vehicles. So, we are positioned perfectly right now with our CNG strategy to allow us the opportunity to wait until they land on the final product of what an electric bus will look like, and then we can enter the market at that time, when it's a proven technology, as opposed to having to go into it first and then working through all the bugs, which potentially sometimes, you know, like our experience with the hybrid technology didn't come through with all the deliverables at the time that the industry thought would be.
Thank you, councillor.
Really appreciate that answer, a good thorough answer, and along with the electric buses, okay. Madam deputy mayor, this is capital, but I'm just wondering, what additional, to be very prokill, what additional capital in the way of buses potentially are you putting on the mountain routes? Can I ask that question, madam deputy mayor? I know that's operating and annual, but capital being buses, the number of buses she has, and how many she's allocating, if you will, to mountain routes where we're trying to build up ridership on the mountain?
Thank you, Deb. Mountain?
So, through the chair, depending on how we make out with the operating budget, so in January, when I come back, I'll absolutely include in my presentation how the allocation of the vehicles on the mountain will be with the suggested service levels we will be bringing forward.
Thank you, councillor.
Terrific. Thanks, Debbie. On-street infrastructure, shelters and landing pads. I regularly get requests for pads and/or shelters, and I know if I recall, a few years ago, I think we had a list of a few hundred prior to your arrival, Debbie, staff would come forward. I think we addressed about 50 on that list two or three years ago, if memory serves me right. Do you know where currently the list of outstanding requests for shelters and pads stand, and how aggressively are we accommodating that? Madam deputy mayor, through you.
Thank you.
So, through the chair, I'll start off, and then probably defer to Tanya for the historicals. So, in 20, as a result of the PTF projects that we identified, we identified the rehabilitation of our existing non-add shelters throughout the city. Approximately those shelters are 15, 14 to 15 years old, are in need of rehabilitation. So, the strategy in 2017 through PTF was to have those shelters replaced, and then in 2018, start looking at expansion locations. Shelter costs us approximately $15,000 to install half for the landing pad, half for the actual shelter. And then I'll ask Tanya to speak to how many we currently have on requests in regards to locations for additional shelters.
So, Debbie, before Tanya responds, so just to capture what you said, approximately, give or take, and each location can be different based on size and the number of people accommodating at that particular bus stop, roughly about $15,000 buys me both the pad and a shelter? Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's correct.
And your strategy has been up to 17 to replace existing, and not to necessarily go after the new list, which I'm going to ask Tanya in a minute.
Thank you.
So, through the chair, given the amount of work and the number of shelters that were identified as a result of the PTF project, staff, we just didn't have the resources in 17 to focus on both the expansion and the rehabilitation. So, our focus in 17 was to look at rehabilitating those approximately 400 shelters that are, you know, have, are 15 years old and are in need of replacement in 17.
400 across the city, eh, that are under the rehab program?
Through the chair, I'll let Tanya confirm that number, but I know it is significant. And I guess the more important part of that as well is the age of the shelters. They're, you know, on an average 15, it's been 15 years since we've addressed the condition of them or replaced them.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Tanya, can we go to Tanya now, please?
Please, please, madam deputy mayor.
Thank you, Tanya.
Through the chair, to the councillor, I'll try to address your questions as I can recall. With respect to the landing pads, I can't give you an exact number where we're at on the list, but I can tell you, we do have a healthy PTF budget for bus stop rehabilitation, and we will tackle as many new landing pads under that program as we can. We can, I can provide you with further numbers, whether you want...
So, Tanya, just, madam deputy mayor, just on that point, I think for the edification of my colleagues, I know I would like it, if you could up to now show the outstanding business list of number of locations, new locations, that you've inherited, and approximately how many in 18 you're hoping to address, I know I would appreciate that. Can you do that, Tanya, please? Not today, but in the future?
Through the chair, through the outstanding business, yes, we'll do that. Thank you.
And, sorry, Tanya, you were going to say something more, I believe?
I believe your second question through the chair related to the number of rehabilitated shelters we'll be doing, we are looking at approximately 350 non-add shelter replacements under the PTF program for 2018.
Councillor?
Now, you and the director have both referenced "non-add." So, how many shelters in total, Tanya, across the city do we have roughly? Do you have that number in front of you, please? Let's call them both the add ones and the non-add ones, as you and the director have distinguished.
Tanya?
Through the chair, to the councillor, we have approximately 670 transit shelters across the city of Hamilton. 266 of those shelters are what we refer to as add shelters, where the advertising company places the advertising case on and puts up advertising, and then the remainder are the non-add, where they're simply transit, yeah, structures, thank you.
Okay. So, the director said that you're still working on the rehabilitation of the existing, what, the existing 350 that are 15 years of age and older? Tanya, did I hear that correctly, madam deputy mayor?
Tanya?
Through the chair, the 350 will, yeah, are, we're going to concentrate on the oldest shelters we have through the shelter rehabilitation or expansion programs in 16, 15, and 14. We put in a lot of shelters. We will not be replacing those shelters. We are going to concentrate on shelters that are 14, you know, 14, 13, 12 years old, to improve the life cycle of those shelters. We also will be avoiding shelters through the LRT corridor, because we don't want to put brand-new shelters in, and then a few years under construction have to remove them.
Thank you, councillor.
So, thank you, Tanya. So, and by the way, Tanya, more and more of my constituents that ride buses and use certain stops and shelters, some of them don't have seating arrangements. I'm trusting hopefully the new ones, where the physicality allows for it. You're putting in benches as well inside those shelters, madam deputy mayor?
Tanya?
Through the chair, to the councillor, our shelter specifications require one bench per shelter. Thank you, councillor.
Terrific news, okay. Last two, so, Tanya, you'll give me that information, please, on the number of new, on the outstanding business list, requests from constituents through our offices, and how many hopefully you're going to address in 18. That'd be great. Last two question areas, madam deputy mayor. So, I know, again, this is marketing, but since I think you touched on marketing in your slides, Debbie, and I get the social equity argument, I've always tried to support that in terms of affordability to the best of my ability, but again, I'll hammer away on getting the suits on buses. Cities like Toronto and others, I understand, from people who've told me, have a lot more suits riding the buses. You've come from other jurisdictions, maybe those that have greater disposable income on average than Hamilton. Any plans to get more suits on our buses, madam deputy mayor?
Thank you, Debbie.
So, through the chair, as part of the 10-year strategy, the first two years of the 10-year strategy were focused on addressing deficiencies, and the remaining years of that 10-year strategy were around growth and increasing the model split. So, as we increase service, improve frequency, reliability, improve the customer experience, those are the avenues that we need to start aggressively going down in order to bring more people to transit who have the choice, whether to get in their car in their driveway or to walk down to a bus stop and ride one of our vehicles to where they want to go within the city.
Councillor?
Debbie, as the new director, I wish you well, past directors. I've asked the question, and no condemnation, but I think so far, the attempt of getting more suits on our buses in Hamilton has been a little bit feeble, but as the new director, I'll leave it to your new marketing plan to do maybe better. And last question, I want to dovetail on what councillor Matthew Green was asking about 330 Wentworth North. So, help me understand again, Debbie, why are we, I know Public Works is inhabiting it, I think DARTS is in there, maybe some other divisions of Public Works are currently in 330. But 330 was the place until Highway 6 opened up, and Highway 6 even opened up before my time, I think it was in the early, mid-'80s, that the transit center opened up on Highway 6. So, with the cooperation within Public Works, tell me again the pros and cons of going, of using 330 Wentworth as your second location for your transit center versus building, did I hear building new and a third, brand-new location, and costs, et cetera, madam deputy mayor, through you.
So, through the chair, I can't speak to what analysis was done before my arrival as to opposed to build new or retrofit 330 Wentworth. I know that that particular location is not, was not available to us, or is currently not available to us, because it's being utilized by other staff. So, I'm not sure if anybody else would have some history around, you know, why we went with new as opposed to a retrofit on 330 Wentworth.
Well, let me, as you're looking to your staff, or maybe the general manager again wants to pipe in, your current 251, my understanding is you can only accommodate about 200 on Highway 6. Is that correct?
Through the chair, we are at capacity or close to being at capacity. The challenge when we get down to numbers is the size of the vehicles. So, the garage has a capacity for so many 40-foot vehicles. As we started introducing 60-foot vehicles, it took up more floor space, which limited our ability to accommodate more vehicles. Right now, we are parking a portion of our fleet outside. It is not the optimum place to have, given our weather patterns here, and so we are almost at capacity.
Okay, but, still talking capital, madam deputy mayor, didn't I remember a few months ago, Debbie, wasn't the plan that you were going to put about 30 of the 51 down at 330 Wentworth Street, or did I miss that?
Debbie?
So, through the chair, that was the initial strategy, was to move some vehicles from the mountain center down to 330 Wentworth, regarding a capacity issue. We haven't had any more expansion vehicles. We lived through last winter with the good work that Mark Selkirk and his staff did in managing the existing space we have, and made it through the winter without having to impact service negatively. So, the decision at that time for this year was, because we aren't getting any more additional buses until the winter of 2018, that we will be able to still maintain the location and all the service out of our location up on the mountain, which then allowed us not to have to hire an additional maintainer and all the logistics around trying to run out of two locations in the interim.
Thank you, councillor.
So, you're able to store the 251 with a little juggling, articulated, regular size, you're able to house and store the 251 all on Highway 6?
So, through the chair, not all inside. So, we are taking advantage of exterior storage, which presents operational issues for us as, in the wintertime especially, to get them started. So, Mark and his staff did an excellent job last summer managing that, moving vehicles around to ensure that they were able to go, but without any additional fleet, so we haven't taken in any expansion vehicles since last winter. But once we get those expansion vehicles, we will not be able to maintain that shuffle through the winter months, and at that point, we would have to move down and access those 30 vehicles that we had originally. So, we've just postponed that move of those buses. We've been able to manage, and operationally, it's more efficient if we could keep them up there as long as we can, but we will reach that breaking point when we get the new fleet for the winter of 2019, or 2018.
Thank you, councillor.
Okay. So, it sounds like, congrats to manager Selkirk, temporary fix, get through another winter, but you still need extra space. So, again, back to where councillor Green was, are we now reviewing 330 Wentworth as a second location again, or are you looking to capital, expand Highway 6, or are you looking for a brand-new site somewhere across the city? I'm not clear on that.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying, Debbie.
So, through the chair, the only direction we have taken since my arrival, and what was planned up until this point, was pursuing a new facility at 330 Wentworth.
Oh, okay. So, we are talking 330 Wentworth Street, which, back to the general manager...
No, sorry.
Sorry, through the chair, an additional building, so I'm not sure how familiar you are with 330 Wentworth, there's a plot of land where the salt dome is sitting.
Yes, is that near the tracks?
I believe so, yes. I'm not sure where the tracks are, but that's the plot...
I just need to let you know I was somewhat familiar, Debbie. Carry on, please. Yes, I have been down there, but carry on.
And through the chair, go ahead, Deb.
So, and through the chair, so there's a plot of land that we have secured, which currently the salt dome and another two-hillyard, I believe, we also secured. And that is where we want to put an additional building, so not the existing 330 Wentworth that is currently staffed by Public Works, but adjacent to it, on that plot of land, is where we have been working towards building the new MSF at that location.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. Now, was that not part of that spur with MetroLinks and that, and possibly funding from MetroLinks, that new hub, that spur off Wentworth Street? Now, again, before your time, Debbie, but could the GM possibly help?
Yeah, GM McKinnon would like to speak.
Through you, madam chair, I wasn't directly involved with that. I think there was discussion in early days around the LRT about possibly running a spur down there and having a maintenance storage facility for the LRT down there, but I think we passed that decision, and now the plan is very different, as Debbie's alluded to.
Thank you for clarifying.
So, just to conclude, a last on this one. So, Debbie, have you done estimate costs on the space beside 330? Estimated cost to build a new beside and/or move back into 330, the existing building, which means displacing DARTS and some other divisions, but has that... But has that estimated cost of new versus going back to the existing been done yet?
Thank you.
So, through the chair, I'm, I can't speak to before my arrival or before the 10-year strategy, what analysis was done with that. The sole focus through the 10-year strategy was pursuing an additional or a brand-new MSF.
Okay.
Thank you, councillor.
All right. I appreciate that, Deb. Now, you've done, you've done very well in terms of, again, with the new knowledge that you have and trying to be a quick study in terms of the Hamilton situation. So, Madam Deputy Mayor, to summarize, if councillor Green then is basically is his desire that we once again compare moving into 330 versus building new beside it, pros and cons, costs, et cetera, I'm on for at least looking at that. Thanks for your indulgence. Thank you, Debbie.
Thank you. I have Mayor Eisenberger.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership, Debbie. I think you're doing a terrific job in managing the current environment and looking to the future in terms of our future needs. I want to get back to what councillor Jackson was talking about, councillor Green. So, my understanding is that we've had a pretty robust needs assessment done on the facility. So, can someone refresh our memory on that? We're revisiting something that we've already, in fact, decided upon in terms of direction. We've actually applied for funding to design a facility. So, I see nodding of heads over there. Who wants to give us the fulsome picture of the assessment that's been done, the requirements in terms of future needs? And I think that's the bigger issue. It's not just about today, but it's about future needs going forward in terms of transit expansion. So, who can address that for me, please?
Mr. McKinnon.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, I'll give it a try anyway. So, I wasn't involved directly with the analysis, but I can tell you that the groups that are in 330 Wentworth, now there are a number of groups and it is pretty much that capacity. And that project on its own, just trying to rationalize city yards, is a bigger project on its own, and it's a real bear. I think the decision was made to look for a new facility close to there for the MSF because that's, that would be the only way that we could attract any funding through the PTF. So, if we were to move out of 330 Wentworth with all the staff that are there now and find new locations, we would be doing that on 100% dollars for the city Hamilton, whereas if we just found the land and built a new MSF specifically to transit, we're only going to be paying 50%. So, I think those were the key decisions that were made some time ago, and I think that was the fundamental theme of the analysis.
Right. We also made a strategic land acquisition, not in and around LRT time, but specifically for this purpose, so that we could secure the land and have the ability to actually plan for an expanded facility down there, correct?
Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, that's correct.
Thank you.
So strategically, we're already well down that path, including an application and an acceptance of funding from the federal government on 50% dollars to do the design phase coming up imminently. So, that's, that's part of the PTF funding that we've already agreed to as part of the $76 million, correct?
So, through the chair, approximately 28.6 million of the 76 million is related to the maintenance storage facility at the first phase. This would be a multi-phase, and it would be for the design and site preparation.
Correct. For the lands that we acquired behind the current existing Wentworth facility.
So, through the chair, that's correct, and so staff are proceeding with that direction. That was a council direction, and so we've proceeded, we've submitted that application. That application was approved, and we are proceeding with that project at this time.
So, kind of final question on that. So, future needs assessment. I know that, you know, some might have the illusion that, that all we need to do is just fill the Wentworth place, Wentworth facility with buses and our problems are solved. We're now talking about not only current needs, but future needs, you know, talking 25, 30 years out. So, we're not, not just planning for today, we're planning for the long range in terms of future expansion, so that we don't have to do this again 20 years from now in terms of another expansion. So, can somebody kind of fill in that blank for me, please?
Thank you. Mr. McKinnon?
Through you, Madam Chair, that's correct. The new facility is being designed to accommodate 200 buses, so that's for lots of growth into the future. Just to add to Mike's point as well, that PTF Phase 1, we're getting the design money and doing a little bit of site prep, and it's our expectation to apply through PTF Phase 2 for the, for the big portion of the actual capital build.
Okay, thank you. So, I just want to be clear about that, because I know some might not, might not have agreed with the decision, but to my understanding, we're well down that path, I think for the right reasons. I'd also want to address the CNG and the diesel issue. I think electric buses are not far down the road, and they're being produced and being used, actually, in fact, in a number of different countries. So, I think we're probably, by the time we get into the next cycle of bus acquisition, it's probably electric bus will be at the forefront. And I understand that they're price competitive with, with current CNG or diesel buses as they are today. So, that's certainly something to look forward to, and that would improve our, not only our operating costs, but certainly our air quality significantly. And I think that's certainly something to look forward to. So, I'm assuming that that's on the horizon.
Through the chair, that's correct.
Okay, that's great. Listen, thank you. I think, I just wanted to clear up the whole bus, I'm not going to call it bus barn anymore, I hope, the bus storage facility and maintenance facility. It's, it's an important facility. It's certainly important for our long-term future, and we are currently able to do it at 50 cent dollars, and that's certainly something that's not going to be available forever. So, I think that's why this council wisely decided to move forward at this time to look at that expansion and make a, you know, a strategic investment to hold us in good stead into the future. So, I do appreciate that. Again, Debbie, doing a fantastic job. Thank you.
And on behalf of all us rural folks, bus barn is very important, because barns are very important.
I love barns.
I love barns. I have councillor Pearson, Skelly, and Conley on first-time list. Councillor Pearson?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor, and certainly appreciate the previous questions raised with regards to the municipal storage facility, bus barn.
Bus barn, good girl.
I just want to, so a number of my questions have been asked, and I appreciate certainly the questioning of the shelters and the status of that, look forward to the list coming forward and the historical information of the existing storage facility on Wentworth and versus the new, the current one, and then the new one proposed. But I do remember Mr. Mayor questioned, this has all been decided, so it's just a matter of moving forward. Lastly, I did want to ask, and Mr. McKinnon just did just raise a concern, through you, Madam Deputy Mayor, Dan, you said that the new facility we're proposing will house 200 buses or units, or is that 200 over what we already have?
Through you, Madam Chair, the capacity of the new building is for 200 buses. We're currently over 200 at the existing facility, and depending on what makes sense from an efficiency perspective of where to house the buses, we'll kind of, we'll make those decisions as we go. But the capacity of the new building is for 200 buses.
Because we're 251 currently, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to verify there's a difference in there and how that's going to be dealt with. So, and I'm not sure if it's under this report, I appreciate that, or if it's going to come under the operating report. Do we have, because it was raised with regards to way back at the beginning of the meeting, it was raised with regards to the investment from 2010 through 2017, is there a breakdown that we can get, and I apologize if we've had it, of year-to-year, the increase in the number of units, the increase in the number of drivers, and service, because we have increased service as well? So, there's routes that have been increased. Can we get that broken down, Madam Deputy Mayor, through you?
So, through the chair, I will be bringing that forward on Transit Day on January the 26th as part of the operating budget.
And I think that will help. And will this also address our recent issues that we've been dealing with, the transit operators and the, and the funding we've just approved at the last council?
Debbie?
So, through the chair, I will also be reporting back on that as well.
Thank you, councillor.
That's it for now, Madam Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Skelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Debbie. Couple of, a few questions, actually. Our shelters, we had a number of vandals that smashed the shelters, certainly on Wentworth. Has that gone up? Are we seeing an increase in, in the shelters being vandalized?
Through the chair, we are, and we're currently working with Crime Stoppers to roll out a program to increase some invisibility, some visibility around the, what we're experiencing, and hopefully in an effort to reduce the vandalism and identify those individuals that are doing that and pursuing that through the courts.
Thank you.
Through the chair, was, was a specific area targeted, and you have a number, count on how many shelters were smashed?
So, through the chair, I'm going to ask Tanya to answer that. She would have the numbers of how many we experienced in this most recent incident.
Tanya?
Through the chairs of the councillor, we had 17 shelters damaged in one night. From what I understand, it involved a vehicle with a pellet gun or some other type of projectile driving down a corridor and shooting them out as they drive along.
So, that was 17, 1-7.
Through the chair, yes.
Thank you, councillor.
Through the chair, are all insurance covered through insurance?
Tanya?
Through our current shelter contract with our advertising company, that advertising company is responsible for damaged and shattered glass.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for that. Still with the shelters, if you, if the PAT exists, it's about 7,500 to build a shelter?
So, through the chair currently, yes.
Thank you. Let's talk ridership. I know that the numbers were down. Can you expand how, what are the numbers? What are our current numbers? And where are we seeing a decline, a little bit more, you know, meat on the bones? Where are we seeing a decline in ridership? Where are we, who uses the bus? Where are we seeing Patla, is it the mountain? I know at one point, most of the people who work downtown are actually coming from the mountains, so we're seeing the volume there. But can you give me a little bit more information about, through the chair, about our?
Just to be clear, and we said this at the beginning, that's a capital project, and this sounds like operating. So, we are having an operating meeting, we're having a GIC operating. So, if you don't mind, can we just stick to the capital?
I'm getting to it in the sense that I want to know where the buses are going. So, if, if, if you, may I, no, you don't, in terms of the?
I'm still thinking that that's all under operation. And to get the fulsome picture, I think it's fair to let Debbie go back and get the, if you, if you're asking for something specific in that presentation, this is the appropriate time to direct Debbie to make sure it's included in that presentation when she comes forward.
That's fair, if you could. Through the chair, and perhaps you'll want to leave this to operations as well, but what is our end goal? We're talking about adding buses. And I know that it's certainly a discussion that happened and has occurred prior to my arrival on council, but are we talking about expansion ever to the burbs? I mean, offering full service? And when are we going to see that? And you want to stick with operations?
Yeah, so again, if you want to give Debbie that direction to ensure that that's included in her presentation going forward, then it can be a fulsome discussion on the operations side.
All right, that's fine. And what I will be asking for is a comparison of ridership levels and how we are addressing expansion in councillor Johnson's ward, for example, and also what our true level of service to the industrial parks and to our airport is and what our plans are for the future. And I will ask one, which is capital.
Thank you. Deb, so you've got that direction for your next presentation?
Through the chair, I'd be happy to bring that back in January for you, councillor.
Thank you. And my final question is, and it's something that the mayor touched upon, how aggressive are we in terms of our plans for electric buses?
So, through the chair, we are keeping up with what's going on in the industry. Mark, the manager of maintenance is, there's a, with other municipalities and what we're looking at through the technology and, you know, what we're essentially waiting for is landing on what does the, the final technological solution look like? You know, there's the thought of the pentagram that is on-street charging. Is it charging at the facility? So, the bus manufacturers right now are, are trying to land on what that actual final look of that bus is. So, we are keeping up to date on what, what that is looking like and where they land and what has been approved for use in Canada. There's some electric vehicles that, sorry, that operate in the U.S. but aren't, haven't, don't meet the qualifications to operate in Canada, so we are looking for that for the next steps.
Councillor?
Thank you, through the chair, and it would be?
Your attention, please. We ask stop visitors to observe two minutes of silence to honor the banking bank women who bravely sacrificed their lives for Canada in wars and peacekeeping efforts. We will now observe two minutes of silence.
Madam Clerk, can I respectfully request the next time that that happens, we can at least know ahead of time and we can announce it at the beginning of the meeting, and everybody will be more prepared?
Thank you, I will ask as well.
Thank you. I think it was well done. It would just be nice to have some notice. Okay, councillor Skelly, you still have the floor?
Thank you, and that was a powerful moment, though. I have to, I have to admit, it's incredible. Are we working through the chair? When we talk about electrified buses, and yesterday we were in the mayor's Smart Communities meeting, they were talking about autonomous vehicles and how within 12 years, there is a real possibility that autonomous vehicles will change the landscape of communities from everything from who will be purchasing vehicles, the fact that there will be an elimination of garages when we're building new homes, because people won't need a vehicle. They'll be calling up on their smartphone and ordering an autonomous car that they'll have a share in, and it'll pick you up and take you somewhere. And that it's going to have a profound impact on streets, on our planning of streets, on transit, on, on our bus, our public service as well. Are we meeting with, with, I mean, how aggressive are you right now when you're, when we're talking about our future plans? Because this is, this was mentioned yesterday, there's a study that's going on right now in Innovation Park about this real, this reality that, you know, it's right around the corner, we've got electrified buses. So, how much effort are we putting on to planning for this radical change in transit and transportation?
So, through the chair, there are two associations, the Canadian Urban Transit Association and the American Public Transit Association, which are the spokespeople, the clearinghouse, for lack of a better description, where all those, that everything transit happens in. So, we follow what is being communicated out in that. We are constantly in contact with other transit agencies to see what the trends are and what, you know, who's using electric, where, you know, is anybody introducing autonomous vehicles? Where I share all of those initiatives. And as part of the 10-year strategy, you know, and to your point, you know, we look so far in regards to what's happening in the next couple of years, but we're also looking out into the future to see how we are going to be better positioned from a public transit perspective to take advantage of those technologies and use those to have a robust system and be able to serve the needs of the, of the city going forward as it grows to make transit sustainable.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, through the chair. Would you, would you? Thank you, through the chair, would you, would you describe this particular budget and plan as catching up or looking to the future?
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair, I think it might, is a combination of both, it is, you know, some catching up and positioning us well going forward, so that we have the capital and what the vision is to take us through the next number of years. Transit is a long-term planning exercise, and we always want to be ahead of delivering our services. You know, we, we don't want, we want to be there when the demand is there, we don't want to be catching up to the demand, and it's been my experience in transit, that if you're not there when the people are there, they will find other ways to get to where they're going, and then to bring them back to you is, you know, a considerable amount of effort in order to continue to grow ridership.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, last time first speaker, councillor Conley, and then I have a second-time speaker, councillor Green, and then the mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to talk about the, almost a hundred million dollars that we are spending since '07 on buses. And I have no problem with the money. I was curious, how many are being, are we getting this year, and what size of buses are we getting? And are they replacement buses, or are they adding on to the fleet, the fleet?
Debbie?
Oh, sorry.
Debbie?
So through the chair, we are scheduled to receive nineteen vehicles as replacement vehicles in 2017, and through the P-TIF project, we are scheduled to receive sixteen vehicles that are expansion.
Thank you, councillor.
Yes, thank you. Just for clarification, that's this year, that's this winter, winter of 2018?
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair, they were ordered last year, it's approximately a year lead time, so we're scheduled between January and March to receive the replacement vehicles as well as the expansion vehicles in that timeframe.
Councillor?
I'm glad to hear that, that we're not just, I'm glad to hear we're replacing, but also that we're expanding, because I keep hearing that we're not doing anything. I think we're doing a lot in transit, and it just, it takes time, and, please, and what kind of vehicle are they? I don't think that was asked.
Thank you, Debbie. Types of vehicles, please?
So for the replacement vehicles, there are forty-foot vehicles, and we're also introducing into the fleet next year a thirty-foot vehicle as well.
Smaller vehicle?
That's correct.
Wow.
Through the chair.
Thank you, councillor.
Because there's some routes that don't demand a bigger bus, but would work better with a smaller?
So through the chair, currently we operate our R-BOC vehicles up in Water Down, which is the DARTS vehicle for, just to understand what an R-BOC vehicle is. So we are going to be replacing that fleet with that thirty-foot vehicle. And the other advantage to having that size vehicle in our fleet allows us the opportunity, as we are expanding our service, to bring a smaller vehicle into those areas as we start to grow ridership, as opposed to a forty-foot vehicle right from the get-go. So that'll give us an opportunity to be more flexible in those regards.
Councillor?
I'm sorry, thank you. And they are what type of vehicle?
So through the chair, they're a vicinity vehicle.
The what?
Vicinity.
No, I don't mean, are they gas, are they diesel, are they?
Sorry. Through the chair, every, every vehicle we are purchasing going forward is always CNG.
Okay, that's great.
Thank you.
And my last question, shelters, and you and I can talk about shelters, and I'll talk to them probably as long as I'm here. I know we have a list someplace, I think I've seen it once, of shelters, and when I looked at it when I first came here, I think I was one hundred and forty-six on the list, and, which means I'll never get a shelter, because there's a hundred and forty-six in front, so.
Okay, through the chair, folks.
Unless councillor Jackson gives me some of his area rating money, and then I could do that. But anyways, is that still this priority list, and, and, because I'll never get to the top, or Ward Nine will never, probably Ward Ten, as are mother ones do. We never get to the top, because there's always people in front of us. How, how do we address that?
Okay, Debbie?
So through the chair, Tanya is going to bring back for council and provide what the list is of outstanding requests for shelters. We do have a warrant program that takes into a number of factors to decide where we are going to place a shelter as we expand our shelters. Also, with that, once we have all our APCs reporting the information, and we get stop-specific information from the APCs, the automatic passenger counters.
Thank you.
We'll be, we'll be able to identify those locations where there is, you know, the higher use locations in regards to having a shelter at those.
So, through the chair, so it just depends on ridership, that's, that's the first and only, because I've got areas, and you know it, that there's, there's bus lines, and then there's an open field, and it's terrible in the winter, you can't even stand there more than two seconds. But I don't have the ridership compared to other places, so that's, I think that's why I'm so low on the list, and I'm always going to be low. So how do you address, not only ridership, is there other factors that would help you decide where to go?
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair, through the warrant program, we do consider location, and to your point, councillor, out in the middle of an open field, regardless of how many people use that, that service, you know, the shelter's there to give you some protection from the elements, and that is part of the consideration as well. So it's not just strictly on how many people are using that vehicle. The other consideration is the frequency of service on that particular route. So wait times in between buses is also a consideration from a customer experience perspective. I can tell you that we are on track to launch our mobile app for real-time bus tracking. We're anticipating that's going to happen at the beginning of December. So that also assists customers in regards to knowing that they'll be able to see on their, their mobile device exactly where that bus is, so giving them more flexibility in regards to waiting times, as opposed to going out to a bus stop for the scheduled time and not knowing potentially if there might be a delay in that, so that will also help.
Thank you, councillor.
Through the chair again, I know I'm having some big plazas being developed right now, and probably be open in the next three or four months. That will bring a lot of people there, they got a bus stop, but they don't have any shelters. And I, I look at those places that are, five years ago, maybe it wouldn't have been a necessity, but now I think it's going to be used ten times or twenty times more. And I don't know if you look at those kind of things when you analyze where bus shelters should go, and how you distribute the money for it.
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair, we also look at those instances, as you've just described, councillor, and I'm happy to meet with you offline, to go a little bit more in-depth in regards to your area, and where those opportunities may exist, so that we can make sure that we have a fulsome accounting of what our considerations should be.
Thank you, and my last question, it says under the repeat of, shelter expansion and rehab, seven million dollars. So how much is shelter expansion of that seven million, how much is rehab?
Through the chair, I'm going to ask Tanya to give you that number.
Tanya?
Through the chair, our goal is to firstly spend the dollars on rehabilitating the, the aging structures through replacement. So much of the glass has been damaged, we won't be reusing that. As we get to the end of our capital shelter replacement, we will look at those shelters that we do choose to keep, maybe need some paint, maybe need some refreshed glass, we're not quite at that level of detail, we're still kind of going through some of the procurement processes.
So there's not a certain amount that's going to go for rehab, it could be seven million dollars of that, it's all rehab, and no new shelters? Is that what you're suggesting?
Through the chair, excuse me, most of the, the money will be on new shelters.
On what?
Some, most of the money will be spent on new shelters. It's going to depend on the shelter manufacturing industry and how much they can actually deliver in 2018, pending if we don't get the quantity that we're looking for, we'll look at investing in paint and new glass.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, and before I continue, Deb, you've been standing for an hour and forty-five minutes, so I have no problem if you want to sit up there and answer questions from up there, because there's myself, and then we have three second-time speakers, so it may be a little bit longer.
I'm fine standing, thank you.
Are you sure? Okay. So I'd like to turn the, the chair, in the absence of the mayor, over to councillor Green, please.
Got it.
Thank you. So Debbie, can you go back to slide five? And just want to highlight where it says Stony Creek, to the right of that, to the north right of that. You've got the purple gray, you've got the purple stripes in there, and that's the, the former Scooby Lands, that's the Stony Creek urban boundary expansion, Winona Fruitland. But also, just to, another section of that is the new Costco that's just come in. And I just want to highlight that as part of the settlement of the lawsuit from that developer on myself and at the city of Hamilton, we were given an acre of land to be used for a transit hub. And given that there's going to be a lot of commercial development coming in, in your capital projects, I know that we've put this as a earmark, because we also have the option to buy four more acres if need be, if it's going to be a multi-transit hub. So I just wanted to highlight that there, because I believe that there was some gap in communication that, with all the new turning over of staff, that that was a lost, and it's not. That acre of land belongs to us, and it's for a transit hub. My second question actually is to Mr. Segaric, if you can just flip it back to the other, to the capital projects. Okay, thank you. Nope, that right there is good. So through you, Mr., councillor Green to Mike Segaric, it's my understanding that all capital projects are levied on the entire city of Hamilton, they're not just area-rated, is that true?
Yeah, so through the chair, I just want to give some thought to our area-rating programs. All of our operating costs are area-rated according to the boundary, so transit again, just as a reminder, urban, rural.
Right.
With respect to the capital, and most specifically, for instance, using the P-TIF, the twenty-nine million.
Right.
Right now, it is borne on the general levy.
Thank you.
So borne by all property owners. We have not taken the position to area-rate that.
Thank you. So this is, this capital, if I'm reading, if I'm hearing you correctly, capital investment is, is actually spread out amongst all of the city of Hamilton folks, not just the area-rated folks, correct? So everybody on their tax levy pays for the capital investments.
Yeah, so through the chair, that's correct. So using the P-TIF as an example, the twenty-nine million dollars in debentures would be borne by all property owners.
Okay, thank you, and I just want to have that clarified before we go further, because I believe there's going to be some direction coming forward, so I just want to make sure that we stick to the capital budget for the HSR at this meeting. Thank you. So now I'm going to go to second-time speakers, I'll take this, the list, I'm sorry, I'll take the chair back.
You got it.
Thank you, so councillor Green, it's back to you.
Thank you, and maybe for my own purposes, may you please explain the difference between a debenture and levy?
So through the chair, if, and that's, that's the perfect slide for, for reference, is, you can see, as it relates to the financing strategy for conventional transit, we leverage a number of funding sources, reserves, the federal gas tax, on the far right is referenced subsidies, I believe that's the provincial gas tax funding, development charges, as it relates to growth-related projects, so projects that help facilitate growth, and we can leverage some funding from future residents through development charges, actually from developers through development charges. And then, so we're left, once we've leveraged the reserves and gas tax funding, we're left with two principal funding sources for, for the municipality, that is levy, so that is money that is coming through the operating budget. So through the operating budget, you'll see, I believe in the area, seventy-two million dollars in funding that goes to support capital, and over and above that, we issue debt, which is the debentures. So project, major, major projects such as a, a building that has a useful life of twenty to thirty years, we debt finance that and spread that cost over a extended period, typically fifteen-year period. And so the reference to the debenture is debt, and the reference to levy is funding that is coming directly through the operating budget.
Thank you, councillor.
That's very important to note, so in other departments, this would be, this slide would look the same if we were to switch this up for roads, or water, or rec, it would look just like that?
Thank you. Mr. Segaric?
Through the chair, for the most part, with the exception of the gas tax funding. So the provincial gas tax funding is dedicated to transit, the federal gas tax funding, we use the majority, approximately twenty-seven million dollars towards roads, bridges, sidewalks. The balance of the federal gas tax, three million dollars, is dedicated to transit. So, so that would be the piece of the funding pie, that varies for transit versus other programs.
Okay.
Councillor?
But just, if we were to build a rec center, and the slide were to come up like this, it would look very similar, we would have most of it through debt, none of it through levy?
Yeah, so through the chair, if it was a new rec center, you would see that the funding pieces would principally be debenture, development charges, a new, new facility, we would assume a portion of that would benefit future growth, future residents, and the final piece of that potential funding pie would be levy.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you very much. So on to the new purchases of conventional buses, are these the Novas that you're going to be purchasing?
So through the chair, we currently participate in the MetroLink's joint procurement, and yes, it would be the Nova vehicles.
And what is the feedback that you've received on the Novas?
Debbie?
So through the chair, you know, they are shorter wheelbase vehicles, so there are inherent different driving or different feel to the ride in regards to the, the roads. I could ask Mark to give you a little bit more detail around all the issues that we've had specific to the Nova, so it's a new piece of equipment, like you buy a new car, you know, if there are issues around, from the original, the OEM, the original equipment manufacturer, if, if something has been designed incorrectly or not functioning the way they have been, then we work with them to come in and make those adjustments. But I'll let Mark give you a little bit more detail around the work we've done with Nova and, and addressing some of the deficiencies that we have seen.
And Mark, can you expand on what Nova is, please, further?
So Nova Bus is one of the two original equipment manufacturers in Canada at this point in time. Prior to Nova, we had purchased buses for about the last decade through New Flyer Industries, which is the other original equipment manufacturer in Canada. We have had some issues with the Nova Bus, some related to a rough ride, which was a ride height misadjustment when the buses arrived. We have since adjusted the ride height so that all buses are at the correct ride height. We have also had issues with the HVAC, or heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems on the buses, and we're working with Nova and their engineering department right now to rectify those. We have a prototype out there, the prototype has been successful, so we're waiting for them to kit the other sixty-six buses, which will need those upgrades. And just for everyone's clarification, when the change is made, mid-service life, when we receive these buses, and we have failures up front, when the buses are purchased, like the next orders of buses coming in in 2018, all of those advancements will be made to those buses when we receive them. So no matter which bus we bought, and I've been part of the procurement process for the last fifteen years, we have had issues with virtually every OEM bus that comes through, they're all custom-made, they are not made like a Toyota on a production line, it's custom-made to the order of the municipality. So when we come across problems, like we do with Nova and New Flyer, we work with the OEM, the original equipment manufacturer, to rectify these problems, and then future purchases have those rectifications made prior to the reception of the bus.
Thank you, councillor.
So we know that they're problematic going in, but you're suggesting that the problems have always existed in other manufacturing. You talked about a narrower, shorter wheelbase, it creates vibrations potentially. You talked about a narrower, shorter wheelbase, it creates vibrations potentially. What would be the impact on, on your drivers? Like, has there been a consultation with the, with the operators about this, this particular bus?
Through the chair, through the Occupational Health and Safety Committee at Transit, we've had a number of issues brought forward to us. With the Nova Bus in particular, some of them with the steering and a slight pulling to the right, vibration in the steering wheel, a shorter wheelbase like a smaller car does provide a rougher ride, depending on the surface that the vehicle is on. So again, we have to work with the OEM to resolve these issues, and as they come up, we present them to the OEM, work with them to have the issues taken care of. And it takes time to work through these, these are large vehicles. So we do look at whatever the Occupational Health and Safety Committee says to us, work with the OEM, and try to get these resolved as quickly as possible.
Thank you, councillor.
I really appreciate, I'm really appreciating these answers. I sit here in this chair, you'll notice, it's not the chair that I use around this table. I find these chairs very problematic for my back. I sit here for eight, nine hours a day, and I'm not going over a rough road. We just spoke about roads. I know some of the roads that we have in my neighborhood, and I couldn't imagine being on a bus that would present some of the, the issues that you're bringing out here. Could you speak for a moment to some of the concerns that I've heard around blind spots? What is the sightline on these buses versus your old ones?
Thank you.
Through the chair, the Nova Bus is a different construction than the New Flyer bus that we've had for a number of years. The New Flyer bus has a split windshield, you'll see that there's a pillar in between the two windows, whereas the Nova Bus has a single piece of glass up front. To support that single piece of glass on the front of a Nova Bus, the A pillar, which is the most forward pillar on the structure, is somewhat wider. So every vehicle out there, every vehicle that you drive that we own, no matter what it is, a car, bus, truck, they all have blind spots. So it's the, the requirement to start looking around that blind spot to make sure that you have a clear line of sight no matter where you are. So every vehicle ever built has a blind spot somewhere. The Nova Buses are new to us, again, we had those back in 1997. So it's a relatively new bus to our fleet, based on 10 years of New Flyer procurements. So the blind spots on a Nova Bus are different than the blind spots on a New Flyer bus, and it takes a little time to climatize those things.
Thank you, councillor.
And I'm hearing this on the, just for clarity, this is on the windshield, these issues arise?
Through the chair, the largest concern I've heard is with the A pillar, which is the, a large body portion that holds up or supports the front windshield, that would be correct, at the very front of the bus.
Thank you, councillor.
I am certainly not a bus driver, but it's been my experience that blind spots are typically to the rear of the bus, and present in the driver's side rearview mirrors, or do they not be, like, I'm, I'm curious how you, how you get blind spots out the front of the window. I can see it peripherally, in parallel, but could it not be the case that there's also blind spots to the rear?
I'm, I'm allowing these questions because they, they relate to the capital project and, and bringing in and acquiring new buses. So go ahead, Mark.
Certainly, through the chair.
Thank you for allowing the questions, I appreciate it.
Through the chair, yes, the A pillar, or the large pillar in the front of the bus, does create some forward-looking and left and right-looking, depending on when you're turning a corner. The rearview mirror location on that bus is there to assist with notify, or noticing blind spots that are on the vehicle. We are working with the OEM to see, original equipment manufacturer, to see if we can move the mirror location on the bus to make the, whatever blind spots are there, whatever visual requirement is there for the operator to look to the rearview and to the side of the bus, a little easier for them to try to eliminate the blind spots as best we can.
Councillor?
I would, I would certainly submit that people walking across the sightline, particularly at stops, intersections, folks do step up off the curb, so I can see why the periphery is off the front windshield are appropriate. I'm also just thinking as a lay driver, the, the rear-facing ones. But, so, so on these deficiencies that have been noted, you're talking about now a co-design between our department and the engineers and the original manufacturers to work through their issues. We've identified that the workplace safety has raised, risen number, a number of issues. I talked about my back. We have identified that out of the 19% absenteeism that we, that we put out there, it's been released that 5.5% are from long-term disability. Who decides how long-term disability is granted? Where are we at? So we're at, we're at a situation for folks that are not following along my line of question, I'll walk you with it. We're at a situation, we're about to order a bunch of new buses, where we have obvious design flaws that have obviously identified issues to the frontline drivers, which completely tie into the future of our transit system, given the fact that we're complaining about disability and about absenteeism. And it's, I think it's very pertinent that if we're going to invest millions of dollars into new buses, we should know, do they work? Are they suitable for the drivers? And how will they affect the, the future service? Because we just moved, actually, Mr. Mayor, through you, Madam Mayor, to, to the mayor who had the question, he moved a motion to hire new drivers. Why? Because we had this 19% absenteeism that was floated around, and we're seeing now that at least 12% of that is because we have drivers on disability. So the ergonomics on the capital are, could be causing folks to be off of work, which could be causing the shortages and the, and the misservices. So if you guys aren't following that line of reasoning, that's on you.
Okay, I, I think we've all heard, thank you. And I think Mark has answered the question that they have been dealing with the health and safety.
No, he hasn't, Madam Deputy Mayor.
And that they are working with the, the manufacturers to...
He hasn't, he hasn't answered the question. The question was, who determines how folks are put on long-term disability? What I'm looking for is correlation or causation between the design of the bus and the absenteeism rate. It's a capital, it's a capital issue. I'm not talking about the...
Okay, so maybe we need to rephrase that question. The design of the bus is at a direct correlation with the absenteeism?
Through the chair, that's not something I could answer.
So through the chair, the, the process for an employee to access long-term disability is precluded by 26 weeks on short-term disability. And the process to qualify for short-term disability, to go on to long-term disability is administered through Human Resources and our third-party provider. So all the documentation required to substantiate the, the reason for the absence is, is done through that, those means. I can tell you that the majority of some of those people who are on LTD are dealing with some serious medical issues. Is there a correlation between that and the Nova Buses? I don't know if we have that level of detail, but I'm happy to go back to Human Resources to see if we are able to determine if there is any correlation to the people on STD, WSIB, and LTD. I'm happy to get that for you, councillor, if, if we track that.
Okay, thank you.
Very important. I mean, we talk about cost consciousness.
Okay, no, answered, thank you.
And so we have, you know, close to 17% on short-term, long-term, and WSIB, 3.8% on the remaining maternity leave, paternity leave, emergency leave, and leave with no pay. That's material. That is very material. And so the questions that I have, you know, in terms of, like, I'm concerned, I have serious unreadiness if we haven't figured that out around this table, about that correlation and the design of the new buses, about moving forward with this design of the bus, if we don't have a clear understanding about what's causing all of this disability. It's not absenteeism, we've identified it's a disability caused by drivers. So if it's me sitting in this chair, and I have back issues, you know, because I've sat in this chair for 10 years, that's on my work. That's on the capital of the chair.
And I, and I heard the director say that she would bring back that information if there was a correlation between one or the other, and if there is, what's the percent?
Last question.
So I heard that.
Do we have time to make that assessment, given the hysteria that we've caused over the absenteeism question, in time to, if it is the case, change whether or not we move forward with Nova?
Okay, so...
So through the chair...
Purchase of the buses, would they be changed if we find out that the data supports that it is the design of the buses?
So through the chair, currently, we're part of the MetroLink's procurement process, which, and our internal procurement policy on putting the specifications out for the vehicle that we're looking for, the equip, original equipment manufacturers, both Flyer and, and Nova submit their responses to those, the RFP that goes out, and it's evaluated through the process, and then awarded according to the procurement policy. So I can tell you that I have asked Mark, and we are reaching out to other transit properties across Canada who do have the Nova vehicles, to see what their experience has been in regards to the, the issues that have been raised in regards to the Novas, and whether or not they are seeing the same thing, and we are compiling that information as I speak.
Okay.
So if it is the case that there is...
Thank you, councillor.
If it is the case that there is a correlation between the design of the bus and the disability that is being caused by it, if there is that determination, is it then negligent for us as a corporation to purchase buses that we know are causing disability with our drivers? I don't understand why all the, why all the funny faces are happening.
No, 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 I'm worried...
I don't understand why all the funny faces are, I'm sorry?
Well, 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 through the chair, please, wait a minute, through the chair, please.
You're not the chair.
Excuse me.
The chair's right here.
Through the chair, and I'm right here, look at me, I'm right here. So you have the floor, councillor Green.
I do have the floor.
Thank you.
But all the huffing and puffing over here.
I don't need you to talk across the table, because I'm the chair, you talk to me, thank you. And no more shouting out, thank you very much, let's be respectful.
I'm concerned about drivers and disability. If you're not, that's on you.
Councillor Green? Councillor Green?
With all due respect, Madam Deputy Mayor, a question like that would best be asked to legal in closed session, it's not something I would recommend you ask in open session.
And I was getting to that point, thank you very much. So councillor Green, any further questions?
No, I think the questions have been well established, thank you.
Thank you. So councillor Farr, my apologies. You asked to speak, and I had you down a second time and realized that you took yourself off first time, so you're at first time now.
My question was answered then, and now I have a new question from the great questions that I've heard. So it's, it's brief, it's a bit parochial, but maybe not, through you to Debbie. Are we challenged at all on the capital repair side of things, and in particular, the McNab Station, which for the most part is, seems to be functioning well, looks great. But for example, I think it was just this week, I have a resident award too that I want to get back to on those emergency poles, all of them have been out of order for a long, long time. And we've had issues in the past that have taken some time to address. The clocks are anyone's guess as to what's happening at either end of the McNab Terminal. And this is our true transit hub in the heart of the commercial office district, and it's widely used. And so is it because of capital repair budgetary issues that we are having issues related to timely repairs, through you to Debbie, or whomever may ask?
So is it capital or operational?
So through the chair, I, I would say it's capital, but that falls under facilities, so I'm going to defer to Mr. McKinnon.
Thank you. GM McKinnon.
Through you, Madam Chair, well, I'd have to follow up with Rome to find out what the maintenance schedule there is, and if we're, if we're getting behind, then we'll certainly have a look.
Thank you. Councillor?
Okay, that's, that's fine, appreciate it.
Thank you. And we have second time speaker, Mayor.
Thank you. I'm going to focus back on the electric bus issue. Fortuitously, Toronto Transit, as of tomorrow, are voting on purchasing 30 battery electric buses for 2019. And there is, is also a declaration between 12 major international cities that declare that they're going to be purchasing all electric buses after 2025. So my point is that I'd, I'd bring back and work with our staff and bring back a motion to kind of create a similar direction, because I think that's the way to go. And clearly, the communities out there are already starting to access electric vehicles, and I know the battery issue's been, to my understanding, been perfected. So I'll work with staff to, to bring back some direction on how we fashion a sensible direction for the city of Hamilton and get to, you know, procurement to electric buses if they are time-tested and, and, let's, what do we, what's the right word? Not only time-tested, but, but certainly deemed to be competitive and appropriate for our system. So I'm, I'll, I'll come back with a future motion to reflect that. But just wanted to share that information with you, because it is happening.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. And councillor Murley, the second time.
Actually, my, my first question was answered by, by staff to councillor, well, it really wasn't answered, because it was along the same lines of the Nova Bus issue, so I won't go down that road, because we have confirmed that we're keeping the buses, though, that's, that's one thing. Secondly, with respect to looking at what the future holds, now, if, if, from a sustainability standpoint, I have some concerns with respect to what we're committing financially with respect to our capital needs, and whether or not we're actually meeting our entire needs. So in assessing what we, if we, if we had a wish list versus what we're actually funding, what, what is that discrepancy, if anything? So in essence, what is, what is the difference between what we actually need and what we're funding at this point?
Debbie, wish list?
So through the chair, I, I think from, just as a motherhood statement in regards to the service on the street, is that, you know, there has been an identified gap between, you know, a lot of support for capital, we get lots of money for buses, infrastructure, and, and all, all of that, but where, what needs to come hand, in hand with that are the operating dollars in order to improve the service. So, you know, I know other transit agencies and through the Canadian Urban Transit Association, we're trying to bring that forward to other levels of government. It's great you're giving us all these dollars for capital, but at the end of the day, I need somebody to sit in that vehicle to operate it, and I need to have the money to expand the service and, and meet the customers' demands. So the wish list simply would be the operating dollars to come along with the capital dollars when we're getting those fundings from other levels of government.
And that's a valid point, because if we have a bus, but we don't have someone driving it, it really is irrelevant.
Yes. Thank you. Councillor?
Through you, Madam Chair, would, would it be possible to outline in detail what, what that discrepancy is, and me, and putting a plan of action of potentially advocating either at upper levels of government, or through internal means of funding, what that amount is and how we can seek it?
So we could certainly, up through the chair, we could, we could look at what those numbers are, so if, you know, every time, you know, upper levels of government provide the capital dollars for a vehicle, what is the operating impact of that, of that vehicle? And advocating on behalf of it, you know, you can give us all the capital dollars you want, we need the operating dollars from those levels of government to support putting that vehicle on the bus.
Thank you, councillor.
And through you, Madam Chair, along those lines, or be, having the flexibility to use those capital funds for operating, would, would also be potentially a good thing.
Thank you, Debbie.
So through the chair, then they wouldn't really be capital dollars, but yes, absolutely, to have the flexibility to use those dollars as, as we would see fit to grow the service would be another possibility.
Thank you.
So through you, Madam Chair, what I'd like to do is draft a motion accordingly, but we'll do it offline for another date, and I'll work with you on that one as well. Because I think it's essential that we recognize not only what the presenting problem is, but try to search out what a solution is. Because a lot of times, we, we gloss the problems without looking for a solution, and even if we can't afford to, we need to find means of potentially affording to do it. So, so I'll work on that one as well, and I appreciate your time.
And last second time speaker, councillor Kuskeli.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to bring up a couple of things. And Debbie, where are we exactly through the chair in the purchase process for these Nova Buses? Where exactly are we in, in the process?
So through the chair, we have ordered our replacement vehicles and expansion vehicles, and they're due to arrive between January and March of 2018. So that's that order, and then depending on...
Wait, sorry, through the chair, that's that order, how many buses are we talking about?
So we are receiving next year 19 vehicles as replacement vehicles, and we ordered an additional 16 vehicles through the, the Public Transit Infrastructure Fund.
Through the chair, are we committed to those additional 16? Are we committed to purchasing that specific bus?
Through the chair, yes, we are. We are part of the MetroLink's procurement.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. And unfortunately, I mean, cities across the country are going to, turning to electric. Edmonton is not going to be purchasing another non-electric bus past 2020. So I think that the, I, I would disagree on that, I think the techni, technology is, is in place, and I wish we had been a little bit more aggressive going down that line, and I will gladly second the mayor's motion to, to at least consider that. But through the chair, and if, if I could, to the mayor, one of the things I would like to do, I know in Alberta, the, with the feds, the province, and it might have been Edmonton, work together to attract the manufacturer of these electric buses, and creating an awful lot of jobs. And I know that there's a Canadian-made component to it, and I think that we should probably be aggressive in that route and say, look, we're in, we're in prime location to attract a manufacturer if we want to lead the way in, in purchasing electric buses. And, and finally, if I may, through the Madam Chair, and it, it goes back to what councillor Green was talking about, this is a very difficult discussion to have outside of operations, and I'm not sure why we split the two, but perhaps we could... and I'm not sure why we split the two, but perhaps we could, in the future, look at being able to speak to transit with capital and operations collectively. I think that it would probably be a much more beneficial discussion and a little bit...
I don't think you're getting any of these.
Negative, so perhaps we could next year look at combining the two. Thank you.
Thank you. So that finishes off my second time speakers' motion to receive. Thank you very much. And Debbie, your legs must be killing you right now. So councillor Ferguson, councillor Green, motion to receive. All those in favor, thank you. And just to remind you that we have a delegate now who's been patiently waiting for the presentation to finish at his request. So if I can ask Don to come back down again, please? And then when Don is finished, we will go to a notice of motion that the mayor would like to introduce. Mr. McLean?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for the council's indulgence in allowing me to speak at the end. That certainly was helpful to hear the presentation and quite comprehensive set of questions from the councillors. Just a couple of comments. The discussion about electric, I think, is one that is very valuable for you to be continuing on. We are certainly moving in those directions and the province has identified that the largest source of emissions in the province is transportation. They are aggressively moving to try to reduce those. Electric buses are going to be part of that. Electric cars are certainly part of that as well. And I think being in, paying attention to what the provincial governments and federal governments are doing is very helpful. Hamilton, in my opinion, has been a bit behind in terms of its dedication to transit and its understanding of the importance of transit and its willingness to invest in transit. The two senior levels of government are obviously very much focused on investing in transit. We do not have a national funding program to expand our road system. We do not have a provincial funding system to expand our road system. We have in both cases major support to expand our transit system. And I think we need to be in concert with that rather than running in a different direction. And in that respect, I would urge the council to go back and look at the disposition of the federal gas tax monies, where most municipalities spend almost or all, most of that on transit or on other green infrastructure. Hamilton is quite unique in spending over 90% on its roads budget. I understand there's challenges with the roads budget and this is a way to do that, but it is a way also to rob transit and has been. In terms of meeting the, the matching funds for the federal funding, we could do that in a little, a little more than a year with our federal gas tax money. And I'm not sure whether that's allowed, but I assume that it is. And if it isn't, we can work our way around that. So that's certainly one of the things to look at. With respect to capital and its, whether it is area-rated or not, I think if you check the way in which we've presented this to this point, and this, I understand Mr. Zagerich is talking about the, the federal package, the PTIF, but prior to that, I think capital has been area-rated. And that is, maybe I'm mistaken on that, but that's, that's what your, your website is saying at this point, is that it's area-rated. The other piece that I would, was talked about briefly but needs some more attention is development charges. The provincial government changed the rules two years ago to allow development charges for transit to be significantly increased. Prior to that change, we could only obtain development charges on the basis of what our level of service was for transit. And we could not do it on growth, on expansion. That changed two years ago. We still haven't taken advantage of that with respect to our development charges. I'm disappointed that we waited on that. I understand that we're moving that way in 2019, in 2018. And that's certainly a positive step, but one that would have been helpful to do even more quickly because there certainly is a way to tap into more in development charges. And with respect to development charges and the expansion, particularly residential development in Hamilton, I'm not sure that we are at this point understanding that we are moving over the next 10, 20, 30 years to a much higher participation of transit and a much less reliance on the single auto vehicle. That's part of what's being driven at us by the central government, the senior governments, it's being driven at us by climate change. So I think we really need to be looking at where we are adding new residential development. When we build new houses, we're not building them for 10 years. We're building them for 50 to 100 years. And putting that in place in the wrong place for the future is not a wise move. So I think that's worth considering. And I thank you for your indulgence.
Thank you, Don. And I have, councillor Green would like to ask you a question, please.
You raised a very interesting point about residential development. What would be your comment on the industrial developments that we have in some of our suburban areas that aren't serviced by transit?
We have, I, I haven't thought of this in, in great detail, but we, we put our business parks all over our community as part of the regional government that we had in place from 1974 on, where every municipality that was in that regional government wanted its own business park. So they're sort of spread around a lot. I live in Stony Creek. Our bus service to our industrial area in Stony Creek is quite poor. If you take the Barton Bus from central Hamilton, it's a seven-minute service, one of the best services we have, until it gets to the border of Stony Creek. And then it becomes a 30-minute service on the 55A. So people trying to get to work there, people trying to get to Mohawk College out there and the industrial development that we're seeing, the Stony Creek Business Park has been one that has been particularly well-developed. It's simply very difficult to, impossible for people to get to work by bus. We need to think about how to do that. That may be, you know, part of that's the last mile stuff and part of that is a continuing problem with the fact that we have different funding levels and different service levels with, between the former municipalities and the old city of Hamilton, the area-rating problem that you're all familiar with. But that's one of the features of it. And I, I think the same thing is happening with the Ancaster Business Park. So many of our business parks are located in areas that are affected by the area-rating situation.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you. At the appropriate time, once this is received, I'd like to just ask a further question to that line, to staff.
Certainly. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McLean, all those in favor for receiving, as councillor Connolly, councillor Green, all those in favor.
Carried.
Thank you, and go back to you councillor Green.
Thank you very much, Madam Deputy Mayor. Through you to staff, hearing that from the presentation, do you feel in this capital budget that you're proposing that we are adequately, or at least in some way, addressing the shortfalls to our suburban areas?
Thank you.
As, as it relates to the business parks in particular?
Have we drilled that down?
Through you, Madam Chair. So the 10-year strategy was to address some of that. This budget represents, you know, year three and four essentially in the 10-year strategy. So it's, I would characterize it as a slow march towards that. The 10-year strategy was, portion of that was to try to address some of that?
And I did have a question on, because I didn't realize about the package deal with MetroLinks. And it kind of came while I was thinking through this presentation. When the, when the cost savings, when the cost savings are presented through MetroLinks, who gets the cost, cost savings? Us or the province?
Debbie or Dan?
Through you, Madam Chair. So it's a joint procurement, so we all benefit just in the price that is, is established. So the idea is that we're getting an advantage through the volume that we're purchasing.
So the city receives the savings?
Yeah, we, we have the opportunity to buy the buses at the prices that were procured through that larger procurement.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And that's everything. So we're at notices a motion. I don't know if the mayor would like to introduce a notice of motion so that when it comes to the next GIC, it can be, or the next transit GIC, it can go through as a motion?
So I'm just going to leave it as, we'll, we'll develop a motion and bring it to the next appropriate GIC and once we have it, we'll, we'll put it before you. But thank you for that consideration. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And thank you to staff, especially Debbie, for standing for almost two hours. Hallelujah for you. I need a motion to adjourn, please. Councillor Pierson, councillor Vanderbeek, all those in favor.